Beautiful.
All right, good evening Coventry. We're going to call this meeting to order at 5:05. We are council members in attendance. We're gonna take a roll call. It should be quick.
Councilmember Hool.
Here.
Vice President Brown.
Here.
Vice President Verducci.
Here. Thank you very much. Tonight we're gonna have Vice President Brown lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, for those of you in the room, emergency evacuation plan. Either head out that door and go outside or come through these two side doors and head out the back. First up for tonight, we have executive session. For those in the room or watching at home, we're gonna try to get this in maybe about an hour, hour and a half, just to try to be transparent, let people have some time if they need it. So at this time, I'll ask for a motion to go into executive session.
Motion to go in executive session.
I'll second.
And I will ask that, do we need to do the vote before I read why we're going in?
Nicky, why you're going in?
Right, so just to be clear, we're going to take a vote to go into executive session for three items. Item A, executive or closed session pursuant to Rhode Island general law 42465A2, potential litigation regarding invoices between the town of Coventry and Angel Law. Item B, executive or closed session pursuant to the same general law for litigation matters, Social Holdings versus Town or Coventry, Town or Coventry versus Social Holdings, Terrence Gray and his capacity as director, RIDEM versus Town or Coventry, and Social Holdings, and others versus Town or Coventry. And that is going to be under one pending litigation and two consent to Adler Pollock and Sheehan's concurrent representation. Final item C is going to be executive closed session under the same general law for litigation matters involving Nicholas Cambio, trustee and others versus Commerce Park Realty and Matthew McGowan as receiver for Commerce Park Realty and others at Commerce Park Management. Two items under that will be pending litigation as well as property tax allocation agreement. That is all. That's all we're gonna do. So that's why we're gonna need a little bit of time back there. So we'll now take a vote.
Councilmember Hool.
Yes.
Vice President Brown.
Yes.
President Verducci.
Yes.
Three and the affirmative zero and the negative motion passes.
We'll be back.
Evening again, all right. We are going to entertain a motion to come out of executive session.
Make a motion to come out of executive session?
I'll second.
Discussion, hearing none. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Hul.
Yes.
Vice President Brown.
Yes.
President Verducci.
Yes.
Three in the affirmative, zero in the negative. Motion passes.
Right, and we're also going to vote to seal the minutes of executive session.
I'll make a motion to seal the minutes of executive session.
Second.
Discussion, hearing none. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Hul.
Yes.
Vice President Brown.
Yes.
President Verducci.
Yes.
Three in the affirmative, zero in the negative. Motion passes.
And just as an announcement, we held executive session. No votes were taken. So now we move to a general announcement. We had an unexpected absence tonight here on the council out of an abundance of caution and making sure we get everyone's votes counted, right? We won't be taking votes on the issues we have. We won't be taking votes on the issues we have in front of us tonight. Unfortunately, we're going to have to push them to the next meeting. But fortunately, the next meeting is a week from today. So those resolutions will, and other matters, we're going to have to continue to the following week. Because we're all here, we don't want to waste additional time, we'll continue with the items on the agenda that don't require a vote. You know, obviously, we'll still take comments and have questions for our administrative team. So, given that, I think I need a motion to take the agenda out of order, or?
But you can either take the agenda out of order, you can deal with it and just indicate which items are being continued to the date.
Okay, I see. All right. And in that case, the next item on our agenda was going to be renewals of liquor licenses. Just out of curiosity, anyone in the crowd for those renewals? Okay, so we do have some folks. If you want to come up here and speak, you know, we don't want to waste your attendance, so do we still open a public hearing for this?
You don't open a public hearing, but if the gentleman wants to be heard, I'd let him be heard and indicate on Tuesday, you can incorporate.
Okay, thank you. So please, come on up and say anything if you'd wish. Yeah, sorry. Okay, so he's on the DEM issue, is that that one?
So I think, then, Mr. President, I think you should, let's clarify, that you're on Section 2, Items A through F at this point in time.
Not yet, then. Sorry about that.
Which we got to those items, the council's going to continue those matters.
Those are going to be continued.
What date is that, Madam Clerk? November 4th? Special meeting on November 4th.
Gotcha. Okay, so, just so everyone's clear, and we're in the microphone telling everybody. So under Section 2, we had matters for public hearing, those are going to be continued to our next meeting, a week from today. And if there's nobody here to speak on those matters, we will head to the next section, Section 3, where we're going to be talking about additional licenses. And I believe we have one gentleman here who would like to speak on that topic, and now is the time. So come on up, make sure the microphone's on, and state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, my name is William Jacobek. I'm a, do you need my address?
Yes, please.
159 Princeton Avenue, Coventry. And I'm here representing the, my senior Peter E. Blessing, Knights of Columbus Council. And I had applied for a Class F liquor license, and this is for an event which we are calling Italianite, to be held at 222 MacArthur Boulevard in Coventry, which is the old Our Lady of Chantilly School and Gymnasium. And it is one of our annual and major fundraisers, and we are applying for a Class F liquor license. It's going to be held on November 22nd, and I had submitted. And as it indicates on the agenda here, all requirements have been met, so I was here this evening to finish that task.
All right, thank you very much for that, that sounds like it should sail right through, but we appreciate you coming in. You are the grand knight we saw in the backup documents, thank you very much for
Yes, I am.
all of the volunteering and stuff you do, we appreciate, we appreciate you coming in tonight. Italianite sounds good, I don't know if you guys are interested, but, no, I am.
So is it resolved tonight?
So what we were trying to get at is, we don't have a full quorum, so we don't want to officially say yes. We're going to take your testimony tonight, and then when we meet on Tuesday, we're going to take up the official votes once we have a
Should I be here at that meeting?
I don't think so, I mean, this is nice tonight, and we can, as our solicitor recommended, we're going to say that you would come in, you know, and all your requirements are met, and, you know, should be good to go.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely, thank you for coming in. Right, anybody else happen to be here under Section 3? You have a victualling license?
Actually, I'm just here to ask a question why you can't take a vote. There are five people on the council, and it takes three people to make it happen according to state law.
I'll let the solicitor explain this one.
So I heard the solicitor says, well, you mentioned the solicitor's name saying that he couldn't take a vote. But, right now, you are a council of five people, there are three people sitting here, there is absolutely no reason, according to state law and the charter, that you can't vote. Can you explain that to me?
The charter requires a quorum of four.
When you have a, when you have a council of seven, you have a quorum of four. If there were six people here, you would need a quorum of four. There are five people here, you need a quorum of three. That is the state law, so, so
But it's a caution, we're going to follow our charter, I appreciate.
The charter does not say that.
Again, sir, I'm not going to argue with you.
I'm not going to argue with you either, what I want to do is, I want to explain something to you. The, the, the five out of seven thing was written by the former town solicitor. Okay? State law, you don't have the book in front of you, it's 4563, I think, that says that a majority of a sitting council, this is a sitting council, we have a sitting council of five, we have two absences. So there is absolutely no reason why these people can't vote tonight and approve the licenses that are being requested. I'm not, I'm not going to argue with you, if you think it's the best decision, you know, that's fine with me, but we right now sit as a council of five. Three is a majority. It's up to these people as to whether they want to take a vote or not take a vote. I know that they're a little apprehensive because of your guidance, but the law is the law, and that's what we do, we follow the law. Are you familiar with that state law?
So, while they're proceeding, I'll
So, so, so like the last solicitor that we had could never produce something to say that this is what the law says. And I think that in the future, when someone is sitting at a table that is advising this council, that they have a state law in front of them, so that when someone like me challenges you, or the council, all right?
Yeah, we do appreciate it, we're actually paying extra special attention to the charter, and this was a group decision out of an abundance of caution. Believe me, we don't want to revote everything.
I understand.
Yeah, we, it's more of that, Councilman Hall was kind enough to
The judge just states four, it doesn't say that if you have a council of seven or five.
Yeah.
It specifically states, four members of the town council shall constitute a quorum.
And if we had a little bit more
The lawsuit precedes the charter recording.
We are, I know, but we had an unexpected absence, or else we would have, we would have probably had a little more research, but
I was trying to
No, 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 and we're actually trying to do your thing, we're really looking at this.
I thought you would be proud of
Yeah, but, you know, that's all right.
Well, well, I'm just, I'm just saying, I'm just
No, we get it, we do not want to have to do this again, believe me.
Thank you.
But, thank you as always, appreciate it. All right, no license for Scott. Let's see, moving along, now this one I think we're good with, we have a report of the town manager, the town manager is here, we have no votes to take on that, we are going to hear a report, though.
So this is regarding Helen Avenue, so this is an issue that goes back to around 2007, when Mr. Ferreira purchased a business there to utilize it in a non-conforming legal use for a trucking company. So he was told by the town that he was allowed to purchase the property and conduct that activity there since 2007. Since that time, I guess there was a lot of complaints from the neighbors regarding loud noises, trucks in and out, trucks idling, a lot of, a lot of activity that really shouldn't occur in a residential area, but again, was approved through a non-conforming use allowance. So the town took Mr. Ferrara to court, and in 2016, ended up going to the Superior Court in 2018, and the judge verified that Ferreira Mechanical does have use of the property per its 2007 agreement. With that said, he put stipulations in place against the business regarding no trucks may idle in front of the business, there has to be a certain limit of trucks that are having any kind of work done regarding inspections. And during that timeframe, Ferreira Construction, or Ferreira Trucking, cut down some brush and bushes along the boundary line. So the judge in 2018 said that that buffer had to be restored. Problem is, there was no questions or no proof of what that buffer looked like previously. So when I came in in 2023, I met with the neighbors on Helen Avenue, they told me what the issue was. I began to work with Mr. Ferrara to reinstate the buffer anywhere from 20 feet to 50 feet, as we could do per the size of the building and so forth. He did begin that process of reinstoring the buffer, I told him not to cut anymore, let's let it grow naturally. He also planted 32 4-foot abrevites along the property line to help them grow and fill in that buffer, if you want to say. During that timeframe, the complaints continued regarding the issues that were brought up in the court order. So I tried to work with the Ferrara Mechanical in order to address those concerns. I went back this spring to see where we are regarding additional plantings, and was advised by Mr. Ferrara that he sold the business in January of '25 to a different company. So with that said, I spoke to the former solicitor and asked him if that Superior Court order is binding to the new owner. And I was advised that unless it's part of the deed that's filed, it is not the new owner's responsibility to put the buffer where it is. So, that's currently where we are, I know the neighbors aren't happy that that was never completed. This is something that I've put a lot of bandwidth into, I have over 100 emails between myself, the neighbors, Mr. Ferrara. And at this point, it's kind of at a standstill, because of the new ownership. I have reached out to the new owner to kind of advise him as to what's happened in the past, and I have not heard back from him. So that's kind of where we are, I know the neighbors wanted to put this on the agenda so the council would be aware of it, so that's where we are.
Thank you very much, Mr. Manager, Councilman Hall.
So I think some of this goes back to the original, you know, I read this entire case, and I think this goes back to our zoning certificate process. You know, I think on a town level, we have to understand how important the zoning process and the research when it comes into certifying zoning certificates, because the town was liable on this side because of our process. We told that business owner that the zoning was there. The business owner then went in, acted on that, purchased a property, just like, you know, Mr. Natalello came before this council to ask for, you know, approval prior to committing to a purchase, and we gave him that, we did the same thing here. I think the largest question that I would have would be if the new property owner doesn't have any standing in this judgment, and it wasn't recorded on a deed, then it doesn't follow the property, it followed the homeowner. What can we do now to rectify if the zoning is not there, or the zoning has to remain there because of, you know, what the courts put in for restrictions about not having so many idling trucks on the property at one time? Why are we not forcing him to do the buffer before he got his business license? That would have been the time to enact what the judgment was, correct, or no?
We don't have business licenses, you're talking in 2007, why didn't we do?
No, I'm talking now, January of '25.
Oh, we don't have business licenses.
That gentleman wouldn't have had to come before the town to operate a business of that sorts? How do we ensure that the businesses in town are operating under their current zoning?
Well, he purchased the property under the non-conforming use that was allowed to the previous owner, he didn't change the use, it's a new trucking company that's there. So there would be no requirement to come in front of the council to ask for additional permissions unless he wanted something outside of what was already being done.
So if this case went as far as it did, and we haven't, and it doesn't follow the new owner, how do we resolve the residence issues with the pre-existing non-conforming issues that that property is holding?
That I don't have an answer for, that's why I reached out to the new owner to see if he would be willing to reinstall that buffer, I couldn't mandate, I'll put that
Well, the judgment stated that it needed to be mandated where applicable, 50 feet where applicable and 20 or reasonable amount where it wasn't applicable.
To Ferreira Construction, Ferreira Trucking, Ferreira Trucking.
So now we have to go through this process all over again on a legal, with the new owners to solve this?
Well, again, I was hoping the new ownership, once they were apprised of the situation and the issue with the neighbors, would be willing to put up a buffer voluntarily without having us to go through a
Can the town take this judgment and record it, where then it becomes a deed attachment?
That's a legal question, I don't
Where then the buffer wouldn't, it wouldn't be up for just, you know, it wouldn't be up for interpretation, it would be recorded with the deed, and it would follow that, that to me would be the only way, you know, I do
The judgment, yeah, I mean, the judgment was against Ferreira Trucking. It wasn't against 225 Hopkins Hill Avenue, it was against Ferreira Trucking, and Ferreira Trucking is no longer
Who was responsible for 225, so if we attach it to 225, it doesn't matter who buys the property over the next, however many hundreds of years.
Court order doesn't say that, so I don't know how legally, how we could, we could transfer that responsibility to either this new owner, or if this person sold it, would it be the next owner, and then is it the next owner after that, I'm not sure how that would work legally.
Yeah, that's, that's
Thank you. Anything? I don't know if anyone's here, I invited the neighbors from Helen to have to come, I don't know if they're here or not, if they wanted to speak to, to the issues that they're dealing with. Oh, we got a, got a hand on Zoom on this one? If you're out there on Zoom, we will get you in, just please come off mute and state your name and address for the record, please.
Kathy Thoreau, 6 Helen Avenue. I am a neighbor, can you hear me now?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, I am a neighbor directly affected by the ongoing zoning dispute with 225 Hopkins Hill Road. I want to present the key facts, supported by the Superior Court and appellate decisions, and the impact this continued enforcement matter has had on the abutting residents. You've basically said some of the things I was going to say, so excuse me for repeating. But frankly, it took me four months to get on the docket, so I'd like to just take my minutes and say what I have here. The property background and legal history, 225 Hopkins Hill Road, operating as a grandfathered commercial use in a residential zone. Formerly owned by Sandberg, it was a machine shop in 2008, sold to Forstens Realty that operated a trucking company named Ferrara Mechanical Services. New ownership, I think, happened the end of '24, maybe the beginning of '25, which is now a diesel trucking company. In October of 2006, the town of Coventry filed a complaint in Superior Court regarding the property's use. November to December in 2017, a bench trial took place at the Kent County Superior Court. September of 2018, the court reached its decision which recognized the existing commercial use but restricted its expansion and imposed six conditions, including restoring a vegetated buffer along the property line that was destroyed physically and with machines by Ferrara Mechanical Services. The town of Coventry appealed the decision, and it was denied in August of '22. As soon as the decision was handed down from the appeal, we, the neighbors, have been trying to get the town of Coventry to enforce the six conditions from 2018, with particular attention to the the six conditions from 2018 with particular attention to the buffer. Over the years, the neighbors have continuously contacted the town with updates informing officials that nothing was being done to enforce the buffer restoration. The town repeatedly responded it would look into the matter. The Superior Court's decision specifically stated if the parties could not agree, the court would appoint a master paid equally by the parties to determine the appropriate depth and landscaping of the buffer. Neither parties went back to court. The town mayor and manager said on May 20th, 2024, that he was the point person. But he didn't want, he wanted to save the town the cost and he would oversee this matter. So the buffer restoration, the court ordered obligation was never completed by the previous owner and remains outstanding. This means that the unfulfilled requirement persists even after the ownership changed. The absence of the buffer has caused ongoing disruption over the years, including loss of privacy, increased noise, poor air quality and intrusion from commercial operations adjacent to our homes. As asked by the town over the past seven years plus, because this goes back way before we even went to court, residents have documented these impacts through photos, emails, texts, drones, videos and other records and sent them to the town. And we were also witnesses at the bench trial. And we sent all that information to the town on a daily, weekly, monthly basis because the town asked us to do that. And while I cannot present all of that evidence in four minutes, the cumulative toll on neighbors has been significant and persistent. And this is why we respectfully request that the town council take steps to ensure the compliance with the Superior Court's buffer restoration order so that the court's intent is fulfilled on condition number six. And residents can finally use our properties as homeowners after waiting years to get this resolved. Additionally, given that the property operates as a grandfathered commercial use in a residential zone, we seek clarification on the town's zoning standards for protecting abutting residents from impacts such as noise, traffic and unfulfilled buffer requirements. So an, an additional question. The zoning law that is currently in place with the town of Coventry, there are three parts to it. If this, if this is indeed the zoning ordinance, the first one is abandonment and discontinuance. The second is change in use or expansion. The third one, transfer of title. Simply selling the property does not end the nonconforming rights. The new owner steps into the same shoes and remains by all restrictions and court imposed conditions. So, I mean, that's all I have to say on this, but I would like that last, especially number three to be looked at. But I, I really urge the town council to please look into this matter with depth and consideration for what we've been going through for years. And it hasn't been lack of us trying to inform the town. We have contacted the town continuously. We've sent pictures, we've sent drone videos and everything that I've mentioned. We didn't let a week go by that we weren't trying to remind the town that somebody is responsible for seeing this. And if the potty that was the defense in court didn't do it, then it was up to the town. The town had already invested a lot of time and money going to court and, and taking all of this into consideration over the years. So to let it just disappear and nothing be done is, is ridiculous. Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. Hearing that, now I'm, just a kind of general question. Any sense of what remains to need to be done there to resolve, you know, some of the complaints?
It's really unclear. It just says the buffer will be restored. That's the general, so like I said, they, I told them not to cut it any longer. So when I first got here, I met with them, I said, just let it grow naturally, which it is. And like I said, he did plant 32 abrevites back there. But again, no one really knows what was there prior to, to say we're trying to.
Restore it was there.
Yeah. We didn't know what was there. They're just looking for a vegetative buffer anywhere from 20 feet to 50 feet wide.
Councilman Hall.
It, it, it doesn't matter what was there before because the judgment states that the buffer should be 50 feet where applicable.
Correct.
And so we, we have the guidelines of what the buffer needs to be.
Correct, 20 to 50.
Why can't we just impose that on the property owner?
Well, that's, I asked the previous solicitor that and he said that that does not carry over to the new owner because it's not part of the deed.
Mr. Solicitor? How would, you know, not to put you on the spot and maybe do some research on it, but it.
Yeah, I think we could, we could at least look at it and see if we could, to the way to enforce it. We're not getting any cooperation. This is a first, I've seen it, so I'm happy to look into it.
Like if we're not getting cooperation from the current property owner, that gives us more of an indication to like, okay, we know where this is going, let's just handle it.
Well, like I said, I left my card there two weeks ago. That's the last communication I've tried to reach out to him and he hasn't gone back to me yet. So I don't know if he even knows about this whole court case.
And then there's another question of, you know, we may know what the amount of the buffer is, but to, I think part of the issue is going to be, they said to restore it. What goes in the buffer to actually stop, you know, maybe the, the noise or the, the visual? So we got a, we're cut out for us on that one, but we did receive a lot of communication on this. I know it's historical and these are, you know, obviously close issues because it's where people live, so. All right, so we will look into this, into, anyone out there listening? Oh, do we have another hand on that? Okay, all right, let's get the next one queued up. Please come on in, state your name and your address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Tyler Albert. I'm at 34 Helen Avenue. I just want to echo everything that Kathy said. We've been dealing with this for many years and I appreciate all of your attention to this. I know we've spoken with Dan quite a bit through texts and emails and visiting the site. So I appreciate that. The, the, the question regarding, you know, what the buffer should look like. It does state in the decision that it should be a dense vegetative buffer of a certain distance, 20 feet to 50 feet where, where possible. So it does say in the decision what that should look like. Dense meaning to me is that you can't see, you can't smell, you can't hear through something that's dense. And it sounds like we, we possibly have some next steps here on what we're going to do. Appreciate the solicitor looking into this and all of your attention to this. I appreciate it. Thanks.
Yeah, certainly. Thank you very much for coming through and, and giving us your comments. We, we absolutely are going to follow up. Right, we see another hand up there. Please come on in, come off mute, state your name and address for the record, please. Yeah, if you could just unmute, we're going to call on you if your hand's up. This font's too small, so I would call your name, but. Oh, Catherine Thoreau, did you open, put your hand back up? If you did unmute yourself? Good.
Sorry, that was by accident.
Oh, that's all right. You're scratching, I get it. Anybody else on there? Oh, I think we see another hand. Please come off mute. Cheryl, please state your name and address for the record. Good evening.
Mute. Hi, Cheryl Kane, 185 Reschool House Road. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. You can hear me, go ahead.
Okay, the reason why I'm calling is tonight, the problem that they're having on Helen Avenue, that license probably should never have been issued. We have a guidance for customary home occupations, guidance for business activities in residential zones. And that was instituted back in 96 or 97. So basically that how, that business on Helen Avenue or behind Helen Avenue should have never been operated in that residential area. Please, I've given you a copy of the customary home occupation ordinance. If any of that information I gave you, which says all business activities must be clearly incidental and secondary to the property's principal use as a residence. All business activities must be performed by a resident. The home occupation shall occupy by more than, no more than 100 feet of square feet area. No persons residing outside the home shall be employed on site. Business activities shall not be visible from any plot, any lot line. No patrons or customers for the sale of products are permitted on the premises. There should be no exterior displays, signs, storage or materials of any kind, any exterior indication that a home occupation is occurring on the premises except as may be otherwise permitted by the zoning ordinance. There shall be no change to the residential character of the principal building. Home occupation shall not generate any vibrations, smoke, dust, odors, heat, glare or offensive noise. No traffic shall be generated by such home occupation, including but not limited to employees, customers, deliveries or shipments. This is what we were talking about all along. The zoning has not been enforced and it's the town's responsibility to enforce this. And this is what we're having going throughout Coventry is this is why? Because this was not enforced. If we go back to this ordinance and we enforce it, which we can, because it's back, it goes back to 1996, 97. These people that are, all have these businesses. They're nonconforming, illegal customary home occupations or residential zones. You know, I've been saying this now for three years. It is the God honest truth. You have to please understand and comprehend the intent of this ordinance. Thank you. Any comments? Can you hear me?
Yep, nope, we got it all. I was just checking with the other folks to see if we had any comments, but received. Thank you very much.
Please, I hope, I hope you hear it and you thoroughly think about it and you do the honest moral thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Thank you.
Councilman Hall?
Just, just a point. If, if the judgment doesn't stay with the property and follows the, the owner or the old existing owner of the real property, does that nonconforming use end with the new owner? Without a variance? Wouldn't he have to get a variance if it's a nonconforming? Anytime the property changes hands? The nonconforming isn't recorded on the title?
Non, the nonconforming use will run with the land. Any expansion of it would require zoning relief.
Okay.
That's, that's the, that's the law on not, and that, that's the law on nonconforming use. Whether or not this, this order runs to this new owner is the issue, right? It wasn't recorded in, on the record at the time. Seems to be some dispute and whether it can be enforced, we'll have to.
I think that's the part we got to look into because the, the quotes that Kathy had right at the end there, I saw you shake your head because I think that third last line talks about both those issues because it seems like the nonconform, well, we're just pontificating. But yeah, I think that's, that's the real issue, so. We'll do some research on that one. Cheryl, did you want to come back? Did you miss us?
Yes, I do.
All right.
So basically what I just brought to your attention, you are just going to dismiss?
No, we, we totally hear you. We, we got to do the research. We actually have a, a new solicitor, but he's, you know, worked a lot with the town on some of the land stuff. You know, so, I mean, everything you're saying at a certain point has a legal process that follows. I know our planning folks are on it. I just don't want to speak out of turn on anything that's going through a legal thing. But as far as the, you know, the, the things that people are granted for zoning, I mean, we, we get complaints all the time on this stuff and, you know, for some of us, it's, it's a learning curve on that. But we do take it all in, so, but I just don't want to, you know, make any assumptions.
Nope, I understand. As long as they follow our ordinances, we shouldn't have any problems.
No, I agree, I agree.
Okay, um, thank you.
All right, that's it for hands over there. Thank you. All right, next up, it looks like we have a report from our finance director. Mr. Bob Sovedi, come on down. Welcome. Great to see you. Undocketed, we're going to do, and do like a regular whole.
What are we doing? Or what are we, we're not doing any public comment about, sorry. We're not doing any public.
I just know that there was people here that wanted to have conversations about docketed items, public comment. And it appears as if we skipped over it in the agenda. And I'm just trying to figure out when we're doing non-docketed and docketed public comment.
You should definitely take both.
We, we just normally do docketed public comment before we have our administrators speak. Maybe our administrators could answer some of the questions from the docketed or undocketed public comment. Was my only thought process. Just, I don't, you guys do it.
All right, so in that case, since I skipped it accidentally, do we need to, well, take a vote to open the public hearing? And then take public comment?
I'll make a motion to open public comment on, we're doing docketed or undocketed? Or do we just?
This is docketed.
I'll make a motion to open public comment on docketed items only.
Second.
Adam Clerk?
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Vice President Brown?
Yes.
President Verducci?
All right, yes.
Three and the affirmative zero, the negative motion passes.
All right, let it go to the room first. Anybody specific to a docketed item tonight? Will you step forward and tell us your name and address for the record, please?
Good evening. Steve Riley, 5 Oshri Drive in Coventry. You have a letter I provided regarding Johnson's Pond correspondence that I've previously submitted to the council and the redevelopment agency since April of 2023. The correspondence was written to document the history of the pond within the context of the sale back in 2020. And based upon the research findings, hopefully drive the narrative towards a lawful solution. My correspondence to you, which began in April 2023, happened only after realizing that both the legislature and the Attorney General's office were ignoring my letter campaign, which I had began back with them in September 2021. I've appeared before you on a number of occasions and registered my concerns over, over the lack of general assembly or attorney general comment on these matters. And so the literature that you have there, I first came before you in a meeting in December 2023, seeking your endorsement for a petition to the general assembly addressing the Johnson's Pond matter, which the council didn't endorse. And that just kind of fell by the wayside, maybe similar to something that the general assembly might relegate the committee to go off and die. What has basically happened, I've been trying to get the legislature to give a solution to Johnson's Pond or the Attorney General to intercede on the public's behalf towards Johnson's Pond. And unfortunately, neither the general assembly, the Attorney General or yourselves in the ensuing time since I've generated this correspondence has elected to pursue that course of action. So I sensed and. So I sensed in the last meeting, uh, looking at it on YouTube, that you folks are in a, a review process. There's been quite a sequence of events in 2025 related to council and Johnson's Pond. And so I'd just like you to suggest the following, uh, items, uh. I still maintain that Johnson's Pond is a simple property rights and corporation law matter complicated by the legislative intent and omission through 179 years of Rhode Island history. I also maintain that the legislature could lawfully resolve the Johnson's Pond issue tomorrow if it were so inclined to. They haven't listened to me, and so, uh, going forward, as you folks are reevaluating, I'll call it, the Johnson's Pond matter in the context of your delegation to the redevelopment agency to, uh, come up with this public use and, uh, GZA's participation, can I suggest that, uh, you take the correspondence that I have given you, it's in a PDF format, relatively easy to use. You click on the, uh, document title and the table of contents, and it'll take you to that, uh, particular document to consider. Uh, if the solicitor could look at that in the context of the applicability for whatever you folks are dealing with at this point in time. Uh, the second item, uh, the town has an ongoing contract with GZA for the public use determination process. The council needs to take a more active, uh, role in the process rather than the delegation to the redevelopment agency, which is currently established. I heard a council member at the last meeting, uh, suggesting that there wasn't any dialogue between the two, which doesn't make sense in the context of how the resolution was, uh, created and the responsibilities. I feel that, uh, GZA's legal department should be engaged in addressing all the issues raised in the online comment submittals so as to produce a contract deliverable that satisfies the concerns of both the taxpayers and the property owners of budding Johnson's Pond. Uh, I've submitted a number of comments, and, uh, as you know from, uh, if you attended the workshop, uh, none of that was, uh, addressed, and in actuality, the, uh, workshop was a little disappointing. Uh, finally, uh, I maintain that, uh, an issue remains outstanding as to the disposition of deeded flowage easements granted to a special charter quasi-public corporation. These have been documented to you in a responsive pleading, I believe it was a two-April, uh, letter to you folks. These easements became overburdened with the sale in 2020, and for the record, the former solicitor and I disagree on this flowage easement issue. I would just say one other thing. Uh, in that April letter, I told you folks that I was evaluating, uh, these flowage easements from the standpoint of the Big River condemnation, which took place back in the 1960s. In West Greenwich, there were approximately 13 of these flowage easement deeds which were condemned, and so the status of them and how they were treated by the state has direct relevance to what you folks, uh, or the town of Coventry did when they condemned, uh, the Johnson's Pond, uh, in 2024. I submitted an op to the state, and, uh, I didn't get a good answer because, uh, the state shows a, uh, map which in fact identifies right of flowage to the Quidnick Reservoir Company. However, they cannot, the Water Resources Board, provide the appropriate deeded, uh, documents for that transfer from the, uh, original owners, uh, as part of the condemnation. I submitted an appeal to the attorney general's office, uh, the open government unit, and, uh, uh, they've denied me, uh, the, uh, appeal, and, uh, basically, I amended the appeal, and they denied that, and the problem with that is, is that attorney general is disregarding their responsibilities for the production of those flowage easement deeds back in the 60s as part of their oversight of the administrative agency, the Water, uh, Resources Coordinating Board, that was responsible for preparing them. So, uh, given the attorney general's, uh, reluctance to address any of my concerns, as you may see there, uh, I'm concerned that the attorney general can't basically, uh, serve two masters. There's no way that, uh, they can effectively handle the administrative oversight and protect the public's interest, and I'm using, uh, Johnson's Pond as a poster child for that, because to me, uh, the general assembly hasn't owned up to this, uh, issue, and the attorney general, who's the top cop, if you will, for the public, uh, defense, has not come forward. Uh, the last thing I'd like to just say is, uh, at the end of that letter, I refer to the, uh, Home Rule Charter and the fact that you folks have subpoena power in terms of getting to the bottom of a lot of issues here on what's going on, and I hope you'll, uh, consider that and your tools with the solicitor to get us a lawful solution for Johnson's Pond. I'll take any questions that you may have on that document.
Just curious, uh, who in the, the legislature, did you have any contact with anybody directly from our, uh, town reps or senators on it?
Senator Rep. Hocken, he was the first gentleman I reached out to.
Gotcha.
Uh, you're welcome to talk to him. I'd love to hear his, uh, response.
Thank you very much.
Uh, I've also discussed with, this with, uh, Senator McKenny, who's the chairman of the Senate Oversight Committee. This was later on in 2023 and 24. And I have that information. Uh, I have another packet that's larger than what I provided to you that deals with legislative and attorney general, uh, correspondence.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Good evening.
My, Brittany Boyer, 318 Town Farm Road. My first complaint is it's freezing in here, but that's besides the point. Um, in reviewing the finance director's note, um, regarding the solicitor, the legal's line item, projected to come in nearly 75% over budget for more than a half million dollars, I'm increasingly concerned that this figure may continue to trend higher before year, excuse me, before year end. Um, I think we need to think about, are we as a town, or has anyone thought about, are we as a town still responsible, uh, for covering Mr. Angel's legal counsel related to the pond litigation after what, whatever we find to happen or to be true? I think we need to really think about that. Um, based on the contract that he has, his attorney bills at $375 an hour. Adding that to Mr. Pasquale's three attorneys at $500 per hour each, the town's attorney at $190 an hour, the council's two attorneys at $350 per hour, the total potential hourly cost reaches approximately $2,765 an hour if all parties are engaged simultaneously. The level of legal expenditure is simply unsustainable. We need to find a way to bring this pond litigation to a close and immediately implement measures to rein in legal spending. Being half a million dollars over budget on this line item cannot be acceptable. We can't move forward and keep saying it's only a couple cups of coffee. It's not a big deal, because by the end of five years, 10 years, we're taxing people out of here. We wanna bring people into Coventry. We're pushing people out. We can't just keep taking it from the public. Um, I would really like to discuss potential areas where cuts or spending caps can be proposed to help keep us within our means, um, and I believe this issue needs urgent attention before it impacts other areas of the town budget. I also came across, uh, a kind of a sub-note in Mr. Sovedi's, um, note about this, saying that this did not include a $25,000 bill that had just come in. Um, I happen to have a bunch of emails sent to me, um, between Hillary Lima and many other people in the town, and on Friday, September 19th, Mr. Sovedi emailed, uh, Ms. Lima, um, and said to her, "It was a pleasure breaking bread with you last evening. I'm just glad that no one tried to steal the last dinner roll from Karen." So Mr. Sovedi and Ms. Lima were out to dinner with Karen, um, and that's when they went over what was going to be approved and not approved. He has eight line items here totaling $146,717, and three minutes, he's asking her to approve them. Three minutes later, she emails back, "These are approved." So I'm not sure in what depth these were reviewed, these were gone through, it took her three minutes to approve them, um, and I have these emails here. So these are just something that we really need to think about. This is a lot of money. I don't think we should pay that $25,000 bill we have on the table unless it's already been approved and paid. Um, this is not okay. This is bad.
Can you just start, can you start that over for one second? I lost track of my notes as I'm writing that down.
Sure.
So I have 146,000. Can you start at the 9:19 comment?
Uh, September, Friday, September 19th at 1:18 PM, Mr. Sovedi emailed Ms. Lima, "Good afternoon, President Lima. It was a pleasure breaking bread with you last evening." So I'm assuming they were out to dinner. "I'm just glad no one tried to steal the last dinner roll from Karen." So I'm assuming Karen was there, who is the tax assessor. Um, he was letting her know that he has 14 days to pay the $146,717. That dates all the way back to March before we accrue late fees, and that was at 1:18 PM. At 1:21 PM, she responds that they are approved. Go ahead and pay them.
I just. My lord. My lord, just speak here. I just wanna make sure that if I'm understanding what you're saying, you're referencing the solicitor's invoices and the approval of the old town council president approving them.
Correct.
I just wanna make it.
Because we have a $25,000 bill sitting on the table.
Correct. I just wanted to make it, I, I didn't want it, that comment to appear as if Mr. Sovedi did something wrong.
Well, Mr. Sovedi was out to dinner with President Lima and the tax assessor, uh, going over these things. So I just wanna make that pretty clear as well. Um, Ms. Lima was out to dinner with a lot of people in the administration, so I think we need to really reel this in. This is getting out of control. This is getting out of hand, um, and it's unacceptable. It's in poor taste. So I think we need to really try to stay within our means here, um, because like I said, the public as a whole is tired of taking care of all of the nonsense that's happening. So, thank you.
Anyone else in chambers on docketed items? All right, anybody online? All right. In that case, we will move to the next item on the agenda, which is a report of our budget, Q1 fiscal update on audits. We have a couple different items here, uh, for Director Sovedi.
Good evening. So first, I'll address the comments that were just made and accusations that were just made. You all may recall that the dinner which he is referring to was the Rhode Island League of Cities and Towns Dinner, which was attended by members of the town as well as some of the town council members. So that was a League of Cities and Towns event. It was not a separate event. It wasn't an event I paid for, she paid for. Again, it was a sponsored event that I believe all the council members were invited to attend. In reference to the dollar amount or my email on the bills, I believe that the council, the entire council, received all of those invoices earlier in the month, and I was simply reminding Ms. Lima that in accordance with Mr. Angel's contract, we had 14 days to pay the invoices or else he threatens to charge late fees. So I was reminding her of that date. I do not believe, and I'd have to look back at the email, but I do not believe that she just received the invoices on that day. I was reminding her of the timeframe and the necessity to pay them within a reasonable timeframe or else get assessed the penalties. So there's a little, I think a disconnect there when she's reading part of an email, not having all the facts. Regarding the $25,000 invoice, that invoice, excuse me, has nothing to do with Mr. Angel or his law firm, what I was referring to. This council received the summary budget versus actual, as well as the balance sheet, I believe, on Tuesday afternoon of last week, so a week ago. On Wednesday, when I was putting together my summary comments, I received an invoice from another law firm, and rather than entering that and rerunning the reports, I simply was saying, "In addition to the report you had, I just received another invoice for 25,000." We may have received other invoices. The first sentence in my summary here, or the first paragraph, I tell you that the town does not do a complete close at the end of every month, right? We have invoices coming in daily, some vendors bill four weeks after month end, some are two weeks after month end. Again, I was just bringing to your attention the most recent information I had available, which was the day I was writing this, which was the day after I provided the report to you, we had received another invoice. Now related, so I don't know if you have any questions related to that? I'd be happy to answer them or elaborate further.
Counselor? We're good. Thank you for clarifying and appreciate it.
Regarding the reports or the comments here, so update on the fiscal '25 audit. The fiscal '25 audit's well underway. Um, we're still waiting for a couple of pieces of information, primarily related to the Internal Service Fund, which is the healthcare management fund operated by the school department. So we, we're still on track where I fully expect to have the fiscal '25 audit completed and financial statements issued to you within the timeframe of state law, which is December 31st, um, which is a far cry from where this community's been over the past four years. In your packet, and again, which I provided a week ago, you have the balance sheet of the town's general fund, which again is a snapshot at September 30th, where we stood financially as far as the balance sheet, the assets and liabilities of the town's general fund, as well as the general fund budget versus actual profit and loss for the quarter ended September 30th. And again, on the summary comments, which I provided you the day after, I gave you some of the highlights, um, just the one item pointing out, rather than go through this whole report, but I'm happy to answer questions that you may have. But in accordance with Resolution 2025-46, which requires that I report to you any department that we think's going to go over budget by 5%, that one department is the solicitor's department. And we specifically looked at the invoices which we've paid for the first quarter, made some adjustments, you know, projecting that forward based on elimination of some of those flat fees, which no longer exist, and that's where, if we continue to trend the way we're currently trending, that line item will be approximately $500,000 over budget. All the other department budgets are pretty much in line. We don't see anything at this point that causes us concerns where we think there's gonna be any cost overruns in the various departments. On the positive side, again, in my summary, I mentioned with the distressed community aid, that actually came in 135,000 higher than budgeted. There were some adjustments made to that through the final legislative approval of the state budget, so that's a positive. And then, um, some of the investment income is currently trending slightly higher, but again, with the federal's, uh, But again, with the federals, uh, I guess the feds looking to decrease the rates over the next, you know, month and then more so in the spring, we may see a slowdown there. But again, at this point, if you have any questions on the budget actual, I'd be happy to answer them.
Councilman Hall.
What do you um, what are you planning to do with the high yield, high yield CDs? Are you just gonna ride the market? Are you, like, when do they mature where you have to address them again?
I play with that. Be honest with you, play with the daily.
Okay.
I just moved some funds. We had one mature at one of the local banks. They were offering 3.7% for the next three months. I was able to get another bank that was going to give me 4% for the next three months.
So you're doing that on a regular basis?
Yeah, it's, it's daily. I look at it daily. Um, right now, we don't have a lot in CDs. We have some funds in what they consider an ICS account, which is providing about, just about 4% interest. We have some CEDAs accounts which are essentially CDs, but all in one account, um, that's a 4%. But generally, all our CDs stay within a, a one, two, or three month period.
Okay.
We're not going further than that.
Also, it looks like the town solicitor's budget, we've already expended approximately $329,000 out of the $680,000 budget. You know, at the current pace, we will be projected to be at the 504,000, which is what you stated, 74% over. With the change in our solicitor and the elimination of the flat fee under our current model with our temporary solicitors and our lower monthly, our lower hourly cost, do you, do you think that that number will actually be better than what it is written down as now?
I, I did factor in the flat fee, so that $500,000 excludes a flat fee going forward. So from October forward, there is no.
Your projections already eliminated that.
Already eliminated that. I did not make the adjustment for the change in the solicitor rate, which I believe the rate that was in the previous solicitor's contract was 225, currently is 185. But because that's currently out to bid, I don't know where that's going to end that. Um, you know, could be 185, we could be 225.
Correct.
But again, we could just look at what happened in that first quarter and try to project. It's very possible that with the Johnson's Pond litigation, really starting up over the past quarter and the hiring of the different attorneys representing the council as well as uh, the former solicitor and the town overall, there may have been an uptick in those bills the first few months as they were gathering information. Maybe we see that slowing down. Um, but we'll be able to judge, you know, once we get the six month mark or we'll look at it monthly, but you know, definitely in December, we can look and try to reevaluate and see where we think that's going to finish. But right now, I would say we're on about a $500,000 over budget.
And it looks like we're taking hits in a couple of places for some property insurance, which is just going up everywhere. We have high electric costs which are affecting some of our things. So I had a note in here, like, is the town on a town level? Have we done an energy audit? Are we ensuring that, like, what we're running for light bulbs? And you know, this program is out there, like, are we doing everything we can to lower some of these backend, even if it's just two, three dollars?
Energy audit's gonna happen now with the annex with the new project going on. We are doing that now. Um, we haven't done it in this building, I don't think, in a couple of years, but we're doing it now with the annex and the new project that's going on right now.
I would recommend that we get this building and all of our buildings on some sort of a rotating every five years or whatever it may be.
Yeah, I can ask Kevin. Kevin will have that information. I can get that to you.
And the last question that I have without making this go on forever is the police detail revenue, it, it's reported to us in gross amounts. How do we, how are you actually calculating that number if it's in a gross amount versus a net amount? Are you just backing out? Like, what are you doing to it?
Yeah, so the way the police detail, how it's worked in the past, the financial statements of the town, internal financial statements, never reported the revenue or the expense that we pay out for police details because it's really just a wash, right? So there's a certain component of that details that the town does maintain, which we do budget. So I think in the revenue side of the town's budget for police department, you may see um, car usage fee and some other component, maybe admin, probably roughly around 100,000 in total. What we also do now, because when we do the annual audit and then we have to provide the information to the Audit General's Office and Department of Municipal Finance, we need to gross those up. So what I decided to do, rather than having to go through the balance sheet and figure out how much do we actually bring in, how much do we pay out, let's just show it at gross. So although we don't budget the revenue in the general fund, we also don't budget the expenditure. So when you look at the revenue line item for police details, you're gonna see it significantly over budget or a higher amount, maybe with a zero budget. So you're gonna see that amount there. But then if you look at the expenditure line, you're gonna see an unbudgeted expenditure line in police that says police details. And those two amounts are the gross amounts. So the police department sends out the bills, you know, as the details are being provided. We record that in the revenue side. And then on the expenditure side is as we obviously pay out the offices.
And thank you. And then my last one would be for the vehicle maintenance department. It seems that we're trending really high, 57% potentially, 73%.
Yeah.
What are we doing? We're three months in here. Um, are we doing anything? Like, if, if that department is spending all their money now, I hope that someone has said to them to get a contingency plan in place for the remainder nine months that we have for the year.
Yeah, so I, I talked to Kevin. We reviewed his budget. Some of those items are because seasonal type thing, so he does see some.
Some will be spent upfront.
Yeah, some of it's upfront.
It'll balance out.
Trying to get the trucks ready for snow plowing season and some of that. Later on, we'll see some of the decrease.
Hopefully.
Overall, we, hopefully, overall, we think we are gonna go over budget in that line item just because of the aging fleet.
Yeah, we have an old fleet.
But we think we're gonna have significant savings.
But if we have an old.
Sanitation line item. So hopefully.
Just because we have an old fleet doesn't mean that they should be going over budget because he should have presented his budget, taking that into consideration.
His breakdowns that happen.
I know, but he's got to build in a buffer somewhere. He's, you know, we can approve a budget of a million dollars if he's spending three every year. We can't just keep saying, well, you know, we had a vehicle breakdown, so we can spend $5 million.
No, I agree. We budgeted, the way the budget was paid was looking at what we spent.
I can't buy a vehicle this year because I'm out of money.
But when, when we budget, we do look at what we spent. We're not looking at previous year's budget. We're looking at the actual and how it's trend. And then we make that presentation based on, here's what we think we're gonna spend next year. But as anybody that works with large vehicles, you know, the cost of those isn't getting cheaper. I work.
Well, it should be because we have a car wash now, right?
It's not installed yet. When it comes in, I guess we'll see if we.
It's just, it was the first three months is what caught my eye. It was three months and a large expenditure there. I just want to make sure that you and everyone, we're all aware that we have nine months.
We have. The last, the last major purchase of vehicles was 2016. So we're going on, that's our, those are our best vehicles.
But every department should have a capital expenditures plan.
They weren't, wasn't funded.
Or their department.
Wasn't funded.
Remember that when we come to budget and we're looking for money. Because become, we present a budget, it's the council's job to pass that budget. I could present you a budget that we're asking for $20 million for capital improvements.
Good luck.
The taxpayers, you know, well, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, yeah. Kevin's, Kevin's complaint, not complaint was, but Kevin's um, built in is that this town went several years without funding capital investments.
Yeah, I mean, this had, that hasn't been this council, since I've said here, we've approved a lot of vehicles.
The last, the last two years, the last two years, we've approved more than what he got the previous eight.
Yeah, okay. The road paving, right? When we look at road paving, prior to this council, Dan being here as town manager, there was no roads paved, I think, in 70 years. And this council's approved significant road paving thanks to some state match.
And again, all I'm saying is maybe we spread out some of our spending. If we're spending 73% of our budget in the first three months.
But if, if, if we want the road, the trucks on the road to pick up the.
But that tells me that they weren't maintained in the last budget round. That's all that shows me. And again, I'm not digging them. I'm just bringing it up that, hey, they've spent 73% of their budget so far, which tells me that we're gonna be getting a report from you that they're over 5% of their budget. That's all I'm saying.
Maybe over 5% on that line item, not 5% in their budget.
I don't want them 5% on, over on anything. I want them 5% on there.
The res, the resolution talks about 5% on a department's budget, not on a line item. Because there's many, I could tell you the way I look at this, we, we look at a department as a whole. And because it's very possible that they're gonna have a line item go over budget, which means we'll stop spending on other line items where we don't need to spend.
Well, he stated that. He said that he's hoping that the sanitation side is a negative to make up for the.
Correct.
For the, so let's just balance those two lines then, instead of being 73% over on one and 62% under on the other, it would just, let's just balance it.
Well, that's where in the next year's budget, once we know, okay, we did just purchase three sanitation vehicles, we should see that.
Historically, DPW runs over budget every year, correct?
Certain line items, yes, and we've adjusted.
But as a total, it doesn't?
New budget.
As a whole?
Go back and look, be honest with you.
Okay.
There's various departments. Again, DPW consists of five or six different departments, not just one department.
But as a whole, yeah, so they're under one.
As a whole, no, they're not over budget, if I had to say off the top of my head.
Thank you.
So just to kind of reset a little bit here, um, so quarter one is down. Uh, we're obviously, big picture wise, when we look at your report, we see roundabout 25% of spending a quarter of the way through the year, very high level. But you know, as we've seen, there's certainly line items we can dig into. Uh, as you alluded to, as these things proceed, uh, you know, we do have that um, ticker that'll make us have to dig down when we have those, uh, you know, 5% and above. I know you noted in your write-up where that may or may not be a possibility, so uh, you know, that's something we'll keep an eye on. Obviously, it's one quarter down, so it's not totally shot yet, but we see clearly what the big driver there is. Is, is, you know, really that legal budget on the, the DPW side. And I also noticed in Parks and Rec, a lot of seasonal activity to, to kind of what Councilman Hall was getting at. So uh, you know, especially in the Parks and Rec line items, you'll see uh, those additional items high and then they'll level out as we go forward. So um, not a ton of room for caution on that one, you know, it's the big numbers that are gonna drive this. So uh, as both of my colleagues mentioned, and I think I mentioned this when they came before us and you know, obviously we'll have DPW again in front of us, but eventually, we have to see those maintenance numbers going down just because of all the purchases. So you know, we're all aware with that. We're all expecting to see that. Um, there definitely should be some economies in that. Did you want to, Councilman?
Can you, can you explain to me where I can find the DPW budget in its entirety? Because it looks like it's broken down. It is like one of the most difficult departments to, to monitor or to every other department I can see.
Yeah, because every, every department is, has one budget. DPW has six separate ones.
So where do I find the six, six separate DPW budgets?
There's maintenance, there's vehicles.
But it's all DPW.
Correct, but it's broken down in the.
But those would be line items, correct? Vehicles?
No, categories.
High departments. So if you're looking, I'll try to grab it quickly here, but Department 830. Right? So Department 830, which on my report is page, bottom of page 14, carried a 15. So Department 830 is.
You looking at 1010-4 or 1010-5?
1010-5. 1010-5 is all the expenditures. So page 14 on the bottom of my report, right, page numbers. So you got 1010-5, 830, which at the top of page 16 shows you Department 830 Roads and Bridges is 4,082,000. Department 840 Snow Removal, 428,000.
Could you just send me a list when you get a moment of what department codes encompass DPW? Because I don't know that. And, and these don't say DPW, so I'm looking at them.
Says department and I'm giving you the headings, Roads and Bridges.
Correct, but I don't know that that is under, like, I don't, I don't know where you're billing that to. It would make sense that it goes to DPW, but it doesn't say that.
Yeah, we'll send you the.
And I don't know what Department 830, like, I'm just looking, I don't, I don't know what.
Maybe for a bunch of purposes, yeah. We can, uh, yeah, we can, I don't know if we can maybe not tweak it there because I'm sure that's all from your.
No, I'll send the list of all of the.
But uh, this.
Wanted to change this.
No, no, it might just be a bit, um, a better for us to say department and then kind of programs within the department. You know, Roads and Bridges is a program within DPW, just so it's clear.
I just want to understand what I'm looking at. That's all, that's all I'm saying.
Uh, let's see. Uh, other than that, uh, you noted a few different things here, so uh, obviously we are very well aware of the issues we're facing financially. We appreciate everybody else's, you know, comments, eyes on this stuff. Please, you know, if somebody sees something, you know, let's get ahead of it. Um, thank you very much, Director. I know you did work to get this to us early so we could review. Um, that also gave us more time to ask you questions.
Which is fine.
Did you have a question?
The balances of the opera.
Yeah, he's got more.
Yeah.
Yeah. So this was just on the, the quarterly for now, we kind of jumped into. Um, so we did the audit. We got the quarterly. We are moving on then. Um, you know.
Yeah, so the other two items that were in the report, we just provided you with an update of the opera funding, uh, the APRA funding, excuse me. Um, and the MOUs that are outstanding as of September 30th to 2025. So as you may all remember, as of December 31st of last year of '24, we needed to commit all the funds that we had. If you didn't commit the funds, we had to return them to the feds. We do have until December of '26 to spend all that money. So on here, we're showing you the obligated amount. You have each program or item that was obligated by the town. So we had a total of 10,407, came in available funds. We committed all of those funds, the APRA funds. Incurred and paid to date was 8,725. So currently, we have open approximately 1.7 million. And you could see the various line items there or where the MOUs stand. You know, a couple of, the lot, largest ones, we have the Lake Tahoe Gatehouse Restoration, 686,000. So that's a project that's currently underway and I think we hope to get done in the springtime. You know, it's being worked on as we speak. So again, you can go down that list, see the various items where they've been committed or where the MOU's been established. But at this point, we don't see any issue as far as not meeting the requirements and making sure that we fully utilize those funds in accordance with the federal law. And then the second report that I mentioned here, the impact fee balance. Again, I know a lot of times it comes before the council where some departments are requesting to utilize funds um, that are allocated in the impact fees. So that just shows you some of the history of the impact fees where there's what approximately seven categories that in accordance with the charter, we have to utilize those impact fees for. And at the bottom of the page, you could see how much is available. So as of September 30th, 2025, impact fee fund currently has approximately 1.1 million available. And again, it's allocated across a number of programs or departments. So Parks and Rec, Law Enforcement, Road Improvement, and you could see the breakdown for each one there.
Quick question on the ARPA. Uh, on the sewer, is there a reason we're not moving that or is that good news, bad news, or just timing or? Uh, you got 200,000 towards the end, uh, septic pumping at the high school.
Yeah, so right now that will be moving this year with the septic pumping that we have. We really tried to look at, yeah, it's still happening. We don't think that project's gonna be, you know, finished until now August next year, so we'll be spending that.
You will be.
As we're getting, yeah, as we're getting pumping right now. Currently, it's, it's costing us about $900 a day to pump the septic.
So Monday through Friday or?
Hopefully.
Every day? Okay.
Usually Monday through Friday. And sometimes, obviously, depending on the weather, whatever's happening, it, we could run a couple runs and it could be more than that.
Great. Any other questions on those last couple? Uh, definitely thank you for the uh, the stuff on the impact fees, because like you said, it comes up every time. So now, uh, when these resolutions come before us and people say, hey, out of impact fees, we can, yeah, monitor that. Uh, you plan on doing this quarterly too? Throw this into your report?
I update it periodically. I think the last time we gave you one was the end of July, but I can update it monthly, quarterly, whatever you like, but.
It, it's good to come with this at least. Um, it's a.
Yeah.
It's a real geeky spreadsheet, so that's nice. I like what you did there.
And really prior to, you know, any time a resolution's gonna make its way to the um, council agenda, the town manager does meet when we review to make sure the funds are available. So they're not coming to you asking for funds that aren't available within there.
So you're verifying before we ever get it?
Correct.
Nice.
The use of those funds, correct?
Thank you.
Or availability, I should say.
All right. Anything else, Mr. Sivetti?
No, thank you. Thank you for, thank you for calling the other day.
All right. So it does look like the remainder of the agenda deals with uh, items we're gonna vote on. So as I said before, we gotta uh, push those. So as I said before, we gotta push those to the next meeting. But we do have, uh, the next item, which is going to be public comment on undocketed items. If anybody here would like to come up, please mosey on up. State your name and address for the record.
Good evening again. Scott Guthrie, 31 Maplewood Drive. I listened with interest when we were talking about how we were going to handle traffic um, when they were going to do the sewer project, um, for the high school, what it was going to cost for manpower, how to redirect traffic, and so forth. In 2016, the General Assembly passed a law, or the Automated School Zone Speed Enforcement System Act, where you can put cameras up, and you can monitor whoever is going to drive within a quarter mile of a school. So you could take probably two-thirds of Wood Estates, where those kids walk to school because of busing laws. They do have sidewalks there. But if you put, or leased, or rented cameras that go all around that area, you can slow people down driving, certainly save lives, and probably either break out even, or add a net benefit. I think it's something that you should look at. I handed a copy to your, um, solicitor. I have copies for you, but apparently the chain's not going to let me go there. I, I think that, that would be something worthwhile to look at, Frank. I mentioned that to you, um, didn't get a chance to mention it to everybody else. But it, but it is in, uh, the Rhode Island general laws, specific to schools. And this project is right around that school. So if you could save on overtime costs for police officers, and any other incidentals that come about, I think it would benefit the town.
Just on that topic, we actually had a vendor reach out. I believe we can schedule something, and we're going to, uh, push that off to our safety committee, because they can actually come in and give us a, you know, just a, a basic presentation, so we have the idea. So that's some, definitely on our radar, so appreciate you.
Fantastic.
Yep.
Second, I want to go back a few months, when I had a bit of a disagreement with our former solicitor, where he thought that we had to adhere to 1.6 of the Code of Professional Conduct. And he stated, um, two Supreme Court cases that said that he doesn't have to give you, um, unredacted invoices. I held those two court cases up in front of you. One was Heel versus Heel, which was a divorce case. And the other one was Tenetti Enterprises versus Menden Road, which was a property issue. I have both that I'd like to put into the record, that have no redactions on them, and they never did. So, um, as this case drags along with the former solicitor, which I think is a, personally, a criminal case, I think that the town should have this information and keep it on record. You might have to take a vote.
Thank you.
If you can take a vote.
Ha!
And the, uh, the one other thing that I'd like to, um...
We can all, uh, have a gentle person's agreement.
Yeah.
We will hold on to the documents.
And the other thing I wanted to mention goes back to Mr. Riley. He reached out to me on, on some, some state issues. Uh, as you know, I spent a little bit of time in the State House. And, uh, he asked me a question on a specific law, and I had pointed it out. It seemed to go in, into a different direction, and he thanked me for it. But I will recommend, and I'll even go with you, to the State Library. If you want to know where there's any information about anything in this scout, I mean, in this, in this state, even going down to the last Eagle Scout in the state of Rhode Island, it's in the State Library. So that goes along with everything that, that Mr. Riley talked about with Big River Reservoir, Johnson's Pond, and, you know, how it was, how that whole thing came across. Everybody in this town, I think, wants to make Johnson's Pond work. I don't think there's a person in this town that wants to see it fail. There are ways that this town can make that work with the powers that they have. You have a little bit more power than you think you have, according to the charter. I'm sorry, I'm losing my voice. It's one of those weeks. And things are getting better, but, um, basically, that's about it. Um, I'm, I'm sorry that you couldn't vote on things. I, I happen to think differently than, than other people, because I sat back there for 23 weeks in a row on every Wednesday night, and went over and over and over and over that charter. And I've seen some things that need to be changed, um, even going over the, over the last year. Simple things that, that would just make things easier for the council, and easier for the people to understand. And, uh, I've yet, I've, and it disappoints me, I've yet to see a single notice go out to any taxpayer about how a budget is going to be started, how a budget is going to be enacted. And that was passed by the voters of this town. And not one letter has gone to one resident in, in four years. So it's time to start using that. Use that as a tool to engage the people. They, they don't have any other way to reach out to you. And you have no other way to reach out to them to say, this is what we need from you, and this is what we can give you. So I'd encourage the manager and the administration to use that tool. You know, and, and finance, you know, they have to explain how things are spent, what we're going to need, what the budget requires. If you don't tell people what you need, every time they come to a meeting, they're going to say no. But if you explain this is the reason behind it, they're probably going to say, okay, now I get it. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else in chambers, uh, found public comment undocketed? Please come on up and give us your name and address for the record, please.
Jason Noon's, Foreview Road. This is in regards to the Town of Coventry versus Angel Law. On this agenda of resolution, section four says, "The town council authorized the disclosure of the specific statements in unredacted form through the town manager of Coventry. I believe the charter says it should go to the financial director first." I could be wrong, but in all this word salad, can you explain to me exactly what's going on? It seems like one paragraph kind of almost like conflicts another paragraph.
And, and this is the one, uh, as it relates to, uh, us getting the re, unredacted invoices, I believe. Hold on one sec, let him... Did you want to explain it? I can give it a layman's shot.
I can explain it.
In, in layman's terms?
Yeah. Pursuant to the, um, the contract with Angel Law, there was a certain provision that required the council to take certain specific action.
Right, and it only went to the town council president at first.
Right.
Okay, that kind of got amended, and where are we at right now?
Where is the amendment?
No, where are we at on the vote approval from the council?
For this resolution? You're raising the issue that Mr. Guthrie raised, um, where the council's going to act on this as soon as it can?
Right, I know they can't vote today.
Well, that's debatable.
Well, yeah, yeah. Well, it is, because right here, it just says on, on paragraph three.
Of the whole resolution, what does it mean?
It means that the council would, would a, a, execute a provision of the contract that allows them to get the unredacted bills.
Right.
And if you want them to go to the finance director pursuant to the charter, that wasn't, I didn't even look at that at the time, I just looked at Mr. Angel's contract.
Yep.
And this is what his contract, and I, and I just wanted to get the bills over to the...
Paragraph three says, um, "Applicable confidentiality obligations the council waivers and authorized disclosure are intended to comply with the agreement for waiver by majority vote." It's a five-member council right now, there's three of... So I can, I can back what Scott's saying.
Yeah, but here's the issue.
Just by the wordage.
Here's the, here's the issue, the issue, sir, and to Mr. Guthrie. The statute that he referred to is correct. It's 4553. This other, there's also a, a statute in the, in the code that says the following, and this is the problem that I'm, that I'm struggling with. And I'll, and I'll read it to you. This is 45-2-1, that says, "Every city in town has all the existing powers and privileges, and is subject to all the duties and liabilities conferred or imposed by its charter, or by several acts of the General Assembly specifically addressing that, uh, addressing it until the charter's repealed." So it's kind of like, as you all know, we were, we did not expect the fourth person not to be here today. So the charters says it has to be a quorum of four. State law says three out of five, but state law also says your charter controls.
Okay.
So all I was saying to the council before we had today, and we only found out this issue just moments ago, is out of an abundance of caution, we had two choices, was either have the council vote on everything tonight, and then put it down for ratification on Tuesday to make sure that there's no legal problems, or we could continue it to Tuesday unless there was something present. So the answer would be, um, we could vote on it, but I would want them to ratify it just to make sure we're covering our bills.
So whether it goes to the town manager or the financial director?
You seem to be concerned about that.
Right here, it reserves the right, whereas the council can request the records. So it doesn't just stop here. The whole council will be able to see.
Yeah, yeah.
The unredacted records.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, but you have to go through all these formalities.
So here's the thing, so yeah, and I can only give a layman's term, so I know I won't do this. But, you know, big picture wise, we want the unredacted invoices, as everybody does. They didn't exist in a format we could get this clause.
Gives you the ability to go through it again. Okay.
That was your question, I get it.
That's all right. Okay, thank you.
It's the cheapest and the quickest way for the council to get the invoices. Yeah, it's the cheapest and the, and the quickest way to get them.
All right, now let's get a real opinion on this, sir.
So I was right.
You didn't hear the second part, did you?
But if you read the first part of our charter, it says that, that, um, the town council shall act, in accordance with the charter and state law. So they're combined, so you can't put one against the other. So if, if, if there's only three people here and they're saying, gee, we don't know what to do, and they're taking your advice, and, which is fine with me. But according to state law, there's three people here, they can vote. And, and that, that was the only thing that I wanted to bring up. I, I know that Mr. Hul knows it, he studied it. Uh, we talked about it. We talked about Mr. Angel's contract when he had it drawn up. And as a matter of fact, I was reading it today, and, and it said, in order to get rid of him, he needed to have a super, a super majority, which was five, with seven members present. That was in his contract. Who could get a better contract than that? Only a king or a god could get a contract better than that. It means that if one person doesn't show up, you can't get rid of me. But state law supersedes that contract, does it not? Absolutely. So, so what Mr., um, Angel negotiated and convinced a bunch of freshman legislators in the Town of Coventry was that it's going to be my way, it's not going to be your way, it's going to be my way. And they all agreed to it. They all agreed to it. And I'm, I'm talking about his contract, all right? So, 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 so here we are. A guy came in and wrote a contract to give himself a lifetime job, and he's no longer here, simply because he did the wrong thing.
The good thing, Mr. Guthrie, is our acting solicitor gave us options this evening, which is something I haven't witnessed behind this.
Well, I appreciate, I appreciate it.
So it was nice to see that.
And, and, and I, I could be the, the stalwart, and I could have stood up here and banged my fist, but I'm not going to. It's, it's your decision, and, and your decision is, is in the best interest of the town. And, and I can understand that, and I can, I can understand the, the heartache of going through it. But I could also pound the drum and say, the law is the law. But it's only a week away, so we can go from there.
That was part of it too, yeah. It was only a week away.
Good to see you again on Tuesday.
Thanks, but thanks for agreeing with me, I really appreciate it.
Uh, I gotta check Zoom. Anybody on Zoom on, on docketed? All right, everybody's good in here. All right. I will, and, oop, you got one, we got a hand. Please come on in, state your name and address for the record.
Uh, hey, Brian Keisling, uh, 87, uh, 78 Arnold Road. So I came in a little bit late, I had a meeting tonight, sorry about that, but whatever. Last week, I kind of had it out with everybody about the shot clock that was there. And one of the council members had pointed to the table with the clerk and town manager and said, she said it was loud, right? Gesturing that one of them had installed it, purchased it, and whatever. And last week, uh, Dan Perillo wasn't at the meeting, we had, um, Maria Broadbent there. So it was in question on which one of the two, uh, had purchased and installed their shot clock. Now, I'm very happy to see that the shot clock is not there, but I do see a plastic yellow chain preventing constituents from submitting documents uh, to you guys, like I just saw Mr. Guthrie, uh, having difficulties with. And I can't help but think that this is a, once again, personal shot my way, that anybody else doesn't have a problem going up there to the podium, but when Brian goes up there to the podium, it's a big problem. And even if I unplugged your shot clock, I think we all agreed that it shouldn't have been there to begin with. And the fact that it's not there this week supports that idea. I don't think that it's appropriate that we keep on doing this anticonstituent public displays, uh, showing the constituents kind of what we can and cannot do, or where we can and cannot go. I think that this is a system based on mutual respect, as we discussed last week with the times, um, as Mr. Hul, uh, had promoted, that we should just respect the four-minute rule, but not feel rushed. Um, and I, I just, I wanted to chime in and, uh, bring that up. Uh, I think that that chain needs to go. And I know that October is the month of Halloween, but I think you guys have had enough tricks this month.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else on Zoom? All right, I see another hand, please come on in, state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Tricia Hunt, 526 Camp Westwood Road, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, go ahead.
Great, I just wanted to commend Mr. Savetti in his response to one of the residents earlier tonight. I thought he did so with a lot of grace, respect, and class. And as someone who tries to watch a lot of the meetings, um, I just hope that we are all working together as a community to build respect and trust. And I think that, um, Councilman Hul was bringing up lots of great questions about the budget, and we have to trust that there is a new council in play, and that Mr. Savetti and Mr. Perillo, they are not our enemies. They work for the council, they have shown up for us time and time again. And I don't think that their actions have warranted some of the attacks that they've gotten, and... that their actions have warranted some of the attacks that they have gotten. And I don't think, I think there are many residents who listen or participate in their own way, who feel a lot of respect and appreciation for what the town does. And I hope that maybe some of the other residents can try to work on maybe their delivery, or just the way that we're presenting ourselves. It's town government. It's not the hysteria of Facebook. And we need to be really careful about the accusations that we make, especially against people who are working really hard for us and not against us. And I can only speak for myself. I'm a taxpayer who does feel like Mr. Savetti has worked exceptionally hard to help our community. So I just wanted to thank him.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Anybody else? All right, seeing no more. We will take a motion to adjourn at nine, ten.
I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We stand adjourned.